The meeting of order, clerk color all. Or junior clerk color all, anybody color all, somebody color all. Council member Cazarelli?
Here.
De Peña?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Nattari?
Here.
Lovell?
Here.
Stromalob Burke?
Here.
And Mayor Melham?
Here.
Good job.
Tired, tired.
She does Shula Burke pretty well. Better than you.
I have issues, right? She's gonna take over.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Sunshine Law?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022, editions of the Vowel Times and Star Ledger. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting and forwarding to press, posting, and filling with the filing with municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township website and town hall bulletin board.
Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everybody to our first meeting in June. As you know, the first meeting in June is considered a council work session slash caucus meeting. That means that any member of the governing body and/or member of our professional staff can put any topic on the agenda for discussion. While you will hear discussion in and among the council and our professionals, please know this is a conversation in and among us. It's a little awkward that you're here as the audience watching this happen. There is no public commenting during this portion, but certainly if you do hear something that piques your curiosity, you could most certainly mention that or discuss that during the public commenting section. Next, I would just add that the courtroom is a little full today, and the council day that's up here is also a little full. Today was Student Government Day, one of the first ones we probably had in the history of Vowel, whereby members of the student government and their respective clubs came to town hall, shadowed many of the elected officials, many of our professionals. Each one of us was assigned to somebody to be mayor, deputy mayor, clerk, administrator, and so on and so on. And we had a great day. So we were there all day with them. We did many different things. And today, they are up here to help us run the council meeting. So that's why you're gonna be here and for some different people. And it's gonna be full month. It's our first time, it's the first time for everybody. So without further ado, this was our, as I mentioned, this was our council work session slash discussion. Various people have put different topics on. And I will pass it over to my co-mayor to read off the first discussion.
Open public records request slash time and cost.
Great job. I think you did great. Okay, so I put this item on. I just wanna maybe touch base with the council, with our administration. I know our clerk is only available for about five or six months, which probably seems like five or six years to you. And there's been a lot of recent press about changes to Oprah and about the costs that are always associated with Oprah and the time that it takes to fulfill Oprah requests. And I did notice a few months back, the Board of Education was doing something, I guess, in the realm of openness and transparency, where they wanted the public to know exactly how many Oprah requests come in and how many their staff and/or sometimes their legal department actually, how many man and woman hours are spent fulfilling those. And they've actually started publishing them in their agendas, which is quite interesting. It could be multiple pages long. If you look at the hours associated with fulfillment of some of these Oprah requests and the costs that are associated. Sometimes, we have to have either our in-house professionals. I know the Board of Education actually has some outside professionals that bill hourly to fulfill these things. The clerk was mentioning to me today, we have one Oprah request alone that's taking us already a month in an attempt to fulfill. So it does strain the workforce, and it does sometimes add costs. I kinda like what the Board of Education is doing by just letting the public know exactly how many requests come in, how long it takes, and what the costs that are associated with them. I did include a copy of the Board of Education link. I'm not sure if the members of the council have that. But Steve, if you could just chime in, or I just wanted to make sure that if we do wanna consider this. Nothing's up for a vote today. It's just clearly a discussion. But I, you... And unless you also know, maybe Steve, some changes coming to Oprah that might be more beneficial to us?
Well, first of all, no one could object to the fact that they put the requester's name because that's actual Oprah-able. So publishing it is fine. Just so people know, in terms of cost, there are, you can, there are certain costs you can pass on when an Oprah request is received, actual copying costs and such, such things like that. You can also, if there's an extraordinary cost, you can, you have to discuss it with the requester. But if there's an extraordinary cost, you could pass it on to the requester. What you can't do is charge for the time that anybody within town, I mean, the state has an Oprah department. That's all they do. There's, I mean, you can't imagine how many Oprah requests the state of New Jersey gets. So they have a, they had to hire a whole staff. It costs them hundreds of thousands of dollars a year just to respond to Oprahs.
So when you see on that Board of Education link that I had sent out, there's an outside law firm that's billing, you know, a couple hundred to a couple thousand dollars sometimes. That's because they're not in-house lawyers? They're outside lawyers?
Yes, but they're not passing that on to...
They're not?
They're not passing...
No, I acknowledge that. So the district is covering it.
The district is covering it.
But they could pass that on.
They can't.
Even if it's outside?
Even if it's outside, because they don't have to hire that outside person.
Okay.
So, so in the large request we got that Albert is talking about, we're using one of our outside professionals. Why? Because in order to do it appropriately and properly, he has the information, you know? You know, it just happens to be that that particular request, he has the information. So it would've been triple the work for me to do because I would've had to go to him and I would've had to search the records. Even with that, it's taken him a month to get them together and to send it out. So they can't, that's not an extraordinary expense. It's something we, as a township or as a municipal agency, are required to do.
So why is the Oprah form it ask you how much money you're willing to pay to fulfill?
You guys look the Oprah? It's an inappropriate question.
I could accuse the worst.
You have to, you have to, if there's an extra... There's copying costs, minimum copying costs.
Right.
If you have to buy a CD or a thumb drive that you're sending, they request it on a thumb drive. Luckily, most people these days request it by way of email, which limits the cost and actually limits the time. So most people request by way of email. But like I said, if there is an extraordinary... And the difficult ones, you're usually ones where you have to go to an outside vendor's of ours to get the information. That takes the most time. Because there's a lot of, like, insurance settlements and things like that. We may not necessarily have them here. We gotta go to the Jiffy together or, you know, different vendors we use. Even though they have the records, there are records, right? So we do have to... So they, they're not passing on the attorney's fees for either consideration or the research. You know, sometimes there's a question of whether something has to be produced or should be produced or should not be produced. That's a cost of doing business in attachment.
Okay. Any comments, questions, issues with... We are gonna move on to the second topic.
Reregistration. Deputy Mayor Graziano.
Thank you very much. So team, just wanted to bring this in front of you and get your, get a conversation going on. I know Vinny, myself, town manager Anthony, Chief Metta King, we're in a meeting with Dr. Tomko in the past. And this has been an ongoing conversation about reregistration of children in schools. And then, how can we align with them here to look at apartments that are not legal? And to do that, we need to come together. And there is a lot of, there has been conversation. There's a lot of good ideas around it. Vinny jumped in at any given time. And we believe that there's a good solution to this to happen, right? And with the up-and-coming school year, with the reregistration, we need to form a team, a committee, if you will, and work with them to do this. Because they can't do, they could do one piece on their own, but we can't address what we need to address from a town in the sole benefit of taxpayers on both ends of things, all right? So I wanted to share this conversation with you all and get your thoughts and see next steps and see who would like to be involved if you all agree in moving forward with this.
So I've been on the same emails I think you and Councilman Cazarelli have been on. Obviously, I've been very supportive of it on every email. So I think we were last just waiting for a date to get together with the school district. I think it's fairly, it's not a difficult ask. Committee, we can do a committee, that's fine. But we need people to do the work. So I think that working with the school district, there's still a lot to work out. That's why we probably need another meeting to do it. But I'm almost certain that it can be easily done. The question that I always have is, what then do we do with the data? Because here, that's where it always falls apart. I'm telling you that we probably can identify a whole bunch of illegal apartments that I know for a fact the police department have been in. That every time they're in a basement apartment or something like that, they do a special report that then goes to Construction Code. And I don't know what happens from there. So why do, I mean, I know why we wanna do it on the school side, but if, we gotta make sure that we follow through to get the real benefit out of it on our side.
I totally agree. And I know that there is a process, and we can refine that process as needed. But we also need town managers' support in accountability when we have to see this from cradle right across the board, right? From beginning to end, to make this successful for, for the community, for taxpayers.
Yeah, it's a team, it's a team.
It's a team, I heard.
If the whole thing, both sides, the whole team on both sides is doing it, then there's no point. But that's why we have to have the meeting with the Board of Ed, with our people, with the department heads, Anthony, whoever the Board of Ed decides, and get it done that way.
And I just want to, and I just want to make sure in this conversation that we all are on board. Hopefully, we're all on board.
I am.
And, and to that, we are gonna be using resources on both sides. And again, the commitment from management to make sure if we see it through, full circle.
I think the meeting is key. I would ask, I know that we, the three of us and the manager have probably been on five or six emails with the school district. I know you got, I wasn't there, and attorneys on that. I wasn't there for the initial sit-down meeting you guys had. But I don't think Construction Co. was even represented. So if there's a second meeting, it's gonna happen. There's plans, someone's gotta dial that department in so that, or read them in, I should say, because they may have a good idea or a better way to do it. And they're gonna have to have a say with regard to resources and everything else. So there's no point in going forward without the buy-in from the manager's office and then down the road to Construction Co.
So with that, Ant, do we have your buy-in? Help support this?
That's, we've always had my buy-in.
Okay, I'm just...
I got a question. Go ahead, did you wanna say something?
Absolutely.
So I remember at one time we were able to check residency and use that as prerequisite as to whether they could register or not. And you still do that? Because I think there's been a big problem with that.
So from my understanding of my, our collective conversations with Dr. Tomko, if a child is in Vowel, no matter where that child is, could be at the Vowel Motor Lodge, could be at your aunt's house, could be at your father's house who doesn't have custody of you. If you reside in Vowel, the district has the obligation to educate you.
Correct.
Now, it's not us, whether or not they reside in a place that's legal.
Right, so it's the exchange of information so that you find out, he's right. If the child lives in Vowel, the child goes to the school. However, if you find an illegal apartment and then, and then you remove the illegal apartment, then if they move out of town, obviously, you don't have that student anymore. But the idea is, through exchange of information, you find illegal apartments and, which, I mean, there's a reason why you don't have a safety-wise and whatnot and also exploding citizenship and people here. So that's what the Board of Ed is trying to do and we're trying to do, or the town's trying to do as a combined effort.
So we have Anthony's commitment. We're gonna set that up.
Do you want to do an ant committee?
Yes.
Naomi's in, former educator.
I'm in.
One, two, three?
One, two, three?
Yep.
That's all you can do, right? You can only do three. Nobody explain. Nobody explain, you can only do three. See, this is, once you go to four, we have a public meeting issue. So you gotta understand that.
We're good. If anybody can't make it, I'll sit in. I actually did a program like this at another municipality in my private life. So I could definitely share some of that. If somebody can't make one of the meetings, I'll do it. Next topic, we're good?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Next topic is, back to you, Debbie.
Illegal apartments, Deputy Mayor Graziano.
No, no, we did all the same.
We had them as two different topics.
Yeah.
Okay, next up?
Councilman Cazarelli, ATF slash dirt bike oriented?
ATV? Yeah. Yeah, ATV and dirt bike oriented. So this weekend, I happened to be outside my house enjoying this beautiful weather and saw, on I think, three or four different occasions, I don't call it gang, gang of about fifty quads and ATVs coming down Washington Ave, popping wheelies, going into oncoming traffic, stopping intersections of red lights, stopping the other cars so that they could go through the red light. What else would they, driving on sidewalks, which I sent videos to the police chief and the manager just so they know they're aware of what's going on. Unfortunately, we have, from the governor, I think, chief, what is it? A no action, we can't chase anyone doing that?
Council, we have what's called the Attorney General's Guidelines on Police Pursuits. Deputy Chief Gorgo's here. He can highlight some of these where, listen, women love apprehending these and tow their bikes and everything like that. It's inherently dangerous. They're not even street-ready vehicles.
No.
They can't even get registered, insured, and get plates. To initiate a pursuit with a car is inherently dangerous. Now, you're gonna get a probably underage, unlicensed juvenile on a not-street-worthy bike and initiate a police pursuit, you're asking for disaster. Having said that, though, if the state would allow us to do that, my officers would gladly do it, okay? But it's just not allowed to cause a dangerous situation by initiating a police pursuit.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
I have an example, if you'd like to see it. Take about thirty seconds, Mayor. Think that's necessary?
I would love to see it.
Yeah.
Okay?
My council colleague here wants to say something on this. Can you play that for me, please?
One sec, let's just take thirty seconds and just describe what happened. In the past, we did attempt to get an ATV was on the wrong side of the road on Washington Avenue.
Do you have the video?
Unfortunately, I do. Okay, so on the left, you'll see it.
On the left, you gotta look to the left of the line.
Let's look to the left, on the wrong side of the road. Why are we not playing? There we go, see him? Wrong side of the road. This is a police officer's vehicle, you're seeing. He gets up to him, he tries to encourage him to pull over. He's yelling at the car, pull over, pull over, okay? And he's not complying. He then speeds up some more, watch on the left, please? And that's what happened. This was relatively mild occurrence, but as you can see, what can happen if you initiate a pursuit. This officer was actually disciplined for this because they violated my guidelines. But it became a dangerous situation. So I feel for what you wanna do, Councilman. I do, I wish we were allowed to do this. But you can see what happened now the township of Vowel becomes liable, not that ATV driver.
Right.
And it can cost billions of dollars in lawsuits.
Right.
And taxpayers need to be aware of that. We wanna do some ordinance on this. But again, we were glad, we would love to abide you and help enforce these.
This is what, so this is what North just did last week. So they passed an ordinance that allows our police department to confiscate any ATVs, not chase, yeah, confiscate ATVs, dirt bikes, and destroy them if they're used in any illegal...
You have to get them, you have to get your hands on them.
Pass the ordinance, that's fine. We can do that anyway. Again, if an unregistered, uninsured vehicle is on a public highway, we can do that anyway. So, and ordinance, only reinforce it. I have no problem. Please pass it, and we'll start from there. I believe we have to start somewhere.
Right. I have a question. Is pursuing, what's the definition of pursuing?
What's the definition?
Do you have to have the lights on, following them, speeding, tell them to pull over?
Well, you see, just following them. Following them is following them. Now, when they become aware of your presence and they either accelerate or try to evade you, that is a pursuit. All right, I know it's tricky. Imagine my officers out there dealing with this every day. I mean, it's hard enough with a car. But it's dangerous enough with a car. This is just one ATV, by the way, I showed you. Imagine a whole, but ten of them.
We have a comment from a member of the council.
Yes.
I propose that the council does a resolution requesting the governor amend the state policy about policing quad ATV used in illegal activities.
So that's a good... You unified the governing body by statement, based on state, yeah?
All right, so that next council meeting, well, myself and Councilman Cazarelli will work with you, Albert. Because then we can send that to our state legislators. We could...
And I have to add, Mayor, if I may, my officers do try and stop them when they see them. They do, but once it becomes a pursuit, they have to... Again, the liability alone, forget about the officer one, the township itself.
So we, and we've had, we were having this conversation an hour ago. My, the flip side of that is, Councilman Cazarelli lives on Washington Ave, and I work on Washington Ave. So I've seen a hundred, hundred and fifty bikes, quads, wrong side of the street, on the sidewalks.
It's not an exaggeration.
And they do terrorize residents, especially older residents that aren't comfortable driving at night and such. And it just seems like these laws are meant to protect the people that are doing the infractions rather than those that are, we're trying to protect our own residents.
I can agree with that.
It's a shame. And what happens is residents then see this on corners and intersections and email me and call me and say, our cops are doing nothing. They stood there, they stood there, and they, these cops don't do anything. And that's so wrong. They just don't get how we're handcuffed, really, when it comes to that. And liable if something happens.
We'll make an attempt. I spoke with the deputy, we had a meeting earlier today. We're gonna make it a policy to just confiscate them if they're parked on the highway. Hopefully, with no driver, we will just confiscate them. And, but please explore your ordinance. I'm glad you brought this up, Councilman. Let's explore this ordinance.
It has something in there that if they fill them up on gas stations, you could grab them and...
We actually discussed that. We can find, we can find, but who's gonna do it?
I don't know.
Should we, should we be the gas station police?
But it needs to be discussed, it needs to be explored. I'm grateful the council is doing this.
Chief, I did want to mention something that we part. I understand that it's not always, it's not always adults that are doing this. Unfortunately, I've seen this when there are underage children. And I think Vowel has experienced a year ago the tragic death of someone, you know, on a dirt bike. So of course, I support everything that we are proposing. And I know a lot of it's out of our hands. I'm just, I'm just thinking if there is a possibility, because we have such a great relationship with the schools and our policing is so connected to the children, is there something we can do with the schools in terms of educating?
Education is huge, it's always an answer to a lot of life skills. Yes, I agree.
Is there something we can explore in that sense? I mean, I think that all of Bellevue experienced, as we also, there was just a one-year anniversary. And I would hate to see that happen again here in Bellevue. I think if we could explore both aspects, because we know law is entrenched in our--
I'm glad you brought that up. If I might add--
Yes.
That tragedy, an apple next year. Okay, it happened. The township was not liable.
No.
But just imagine if the police were chasing it and they had the same result.
Yeah.
Do you see why it's weighed--
Yeah, for sure.
Like, what's the importance of giving a ticket? Because all of this is a motor vehicle offense, it's not even a crime. And to someone's, and losing, someone losing their life and possibly--
Today, it's awful.
But yes, we can educate, we can do a forum in the schools and--
And I know we already do all these activities on the streets, you know, in the schools. So maybe just adding to that, where we are creating some type of awareness and maybe some type of campaign. I think it would help, just, you know, the more times that you bring it up, hopefully, the students will have a better clarity.
Yeah. A lot of it, apart from out of town, too, also.
Today, today when I left my office to go home about four, four-thirty, I've seen this, I don't want to say child, not even a teenager. This child has to be ten years old, I've seen him before. I don't know if he was on an electric bike or not, coming down the hill into oncoming traffic in the middle of the street. Has to be ten, eleven years old at most. And I've seen this child multiple times do this.
Steve, just a real quick question. As far as fuel sales, you know, to ATVs, to gas cans, that kind of stuff. Is there an industry string that we can put in place?
You know, I talked to Vinnie about this, he mentioned it to me when he started thinking about this. I gotta look, because there's federal laws involved.
Right.
So I have to check. But again, you're talking about proofing somebody to give them gas. In other words, you don't want to give somebody gas over the, you know, under the age of sixteen. It could dissuade some people, maybe. Get alcohol at that age. They could probably get gas at that age. Mayor, just one thing I wanted to say. It's not only about, Marx says talks about liability. Because I've had this situation in another town where I represent them under personal injury. It's not just the person you're chasing. So in that video, if that happened two seconds earlier, that driver who was making a left-hand turn would have tried to avoid that guy and could have hit a pole, could have hit a pedestrian. It's the people that are affected outside the person you're chasing.
Steve, that person went to the hospital with chest pains.
She was on an ORF.
Oh, yeah.
So, so that's the, that's the bigger concern. I mean, it's a concern for the person driving the vehicle and you're chasing. But it's all the innocent people around them that get in an accident and hit a pole, or hit a tree, or hit a pedestrian because of that. So that's why the Attorney General's guidelines are that way. It's not so much for that individual, it's for everybody else that's affected by it.
Yeah, Naomi, I do agree with you what you said. There's a lot of minors that are doing this. And it's at night, late at night. And I do agree with you about educating them. But we also need, if we're going to educate the kids, the parents need to be educated on this. And again, with dirt bikes, when they get a dirt bike, where are they gonna go with it? They're gonna go on the streets, they're not gonna ride them in the driveways. So parents need to see the severity of this with an accident. But I'm a hundred percent on board with you about educating both children and parents. And you are right, there's a lot of minors that are doing this, a lot. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move along, we're good with that? Anybody else, comments, issues, questions, suggestions? Good with that? So let's do-- All right, we're gonna move along.
Next item on our agenda, report of the manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A reminder that Tuesday, June 27th, we will hold our budget public hearing. Summer camp registration has been very active. We have one hundred and ten campers registered. Both the 4:30 PM and 6:00 PM Wednesday pickleball clinics are filled. And we are now taking registration for additional clinic in July or August. Very excited to inform the council that the 2023 summer concert series will officially be announced within the week. With entering sounds from Infernos, Mototown, the Latino Swing Band, and the Cam Mules' soul and country music, we are available for any additional questions or concerns.
Wow. Can she count to four?
One, two, three.
Four.
Make a motion.
Great job.
Is she answering questions?
We do have it. I do have a question, do you?
Yeah, I just had a question in regards to summer camp and how things were going in terms of our hires.
So we, we started the, we have camp supervisors. These are three adults, they're actually teachers. They either live in Bellevue and teach in a different school district, or teach in a different school district and live in Bellevue. So we have three supervisors. And, yeah, I said the same thing. Every mistake I made in my life did get-- So, but that's your right.
You mean, they live outside of Bellevue, but are--
At work.
I prefer Manager Boylan, actually, into this question. And we have, and we, we have over eighty applications for summer help. So our ratio right now looks like will probably be for every camp will have six camp councils. Six to one ratio.
Wow.
Which is relatively good. Especially if you're going on a field trip.
Yeah.
One council would be basically in charge of six children. Okay, so I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Manager Boylan or Manager Iacono. Sorry to bring this back to a little business, but today on the agenda, we're gonna be passing a resolution in, to let the State Controller's Office know that we are in compliance with the vacation policy. Can, I'm getting questions, can either manager, preferably Mr. Iacono, though, explain what the, what the policy is in brief? And the all-important question that it seems like every employee is interested in is, can, are they able to carry over any vacation? If so, how much? If no, a definitive yes or no?
So to keep a very complex issue very simple, the answer is no. We've been told in no one's second terms that vacation time is exactly that vacation time. And you cannot accrue it, especially for retirement reasons and things of that nature.
So the state is telling us--
If you read the report, it specifically tells you you cannot accrue--
They give no discretion to the manager or the governing bodies?
Discretion would be, and these are extreme discretions, whereas an employee requested vacation and they were denied. That doesn't happen. Now, police and fire are always a little different than the public employees. So the, a police officer or firefighter, clearly, there are times where they put in for vacation--
Let's talk about that.
So if we're talking about the white and blue collar employees here in Town Hall, it's use your vacation or lose it. And that's coming from the State Controller.
I am being told a little different. I'm being told that there have been phone calls made to the state, and the state says it's up to the manager whether or not you can carry over a week's vacation.
That's not accurate.
I need to know.
It's not accurate. The only time, as he says, it's got to be the extreme circumstances where staffing doesn't allow somebody to use their vacation.
Makes sense to me. Okay. That was my one question. So now we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda.
Report of the mayor.
Okay, we're now off to report the mayor. So I always start with doing two different things. We do some past events, upcoming events, and news. Glad we have a captive audience here today. Some past events, we had an excellent Memorial Day ceremony on May 29th. We started out at the Dutch Reform Church, ended up at the Veterans Memorial. Then the police department did their community bike ride, which was an overwhelming success, as it always is. Great job, chief. Then we had, the same exact day, Saturday, June 3rd, we had our pickleball grand opening. Anybody here play pickleball? Okay. One, two, three. Wow, four. Okay. Anybody ever know what pickleball is? Okay. Anybody seen me on TV? Let's go, okay, there's a few more. So our pickleball courts are open, they're the first pickleball courts in Bellevue. We now have two courts located in Municipal Stadium Complex. That was on Saturday, June 3rd. This past Sunday, we honored the life and legacy of former Mayor Raymond Kimball with a street dedication. And as you now know, today is Student Government Day in Bellevue. Upcoming events, tomorrow, speaking of pickleball, first pickleball lessons are being offered. I'm told the first class is a sellout.
First and second.
First and second are sellouts. So we have two different sessions, 4:30 to 6:00, and 6:00 to 7:30. Fifty dollars per person, but it's a four-week clinic. So it's fifty dollars for four weeks, for an hour and a half. So that's six hours of training by a pro for fifty bucks, not bad. Wednesday. But it's all sold out, you can't get it. Unless you know somebody. Yes, we're gonna try and do the same exact thing for July and August. Also, this coming Saturday, the library at 11:30 is doing a Juneteenth celebration by hosting a dance company. Our next council meeting will be the 27th, that will be a budget hearing. And I'm not sure, but I believe in either July or August. More info coming on that. The motor vehicle portable little on-the-road type thing will be back in Bellevue. News, as you just heard from our co-manager, summer camp has exceeded registration capacity. Might I add, this is the first year we're charging, and we've already exceeded our capacity, which is actually pretty interesting. Fall sports registration is now open. Information on our website, football, cheerleading, soccer. It also looks like our official meeting of July 1st, our reorganization meeting, may be canceled. Looks like the township will, the council will be making appropriate appointments at the last meeting in June. As I always mentioned, low-income water assistance program available on our website. Zuba, Tai Chi, and still happening every Tuesday and Thursday. And as I always end, check out our library's website for some great programming, including a enhanced ESL program that's doing very, very well. That's it for my mayor's report.
Approval of minutes. Regular meetings of May 23rd, 2023.
I need a motion.
A move?
Second.
We have a motion made, and second, clerk, either one of you, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
Depeña? Yes. Graziano? Yes. Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. So, you? Okay, I'm gonna do that later, that's okay. Next item on our agenda?
Communications.
A, a letter from Deputy Chief Gerard Corbo informing the council that the Emergency Operations Plan, EOP, has been approved. B, Inglésia--
Inglésia Batista.
Batista La Gracia requesting the closures-- Request the church, requesting the closure of Brimont Street between Little Street and Overlook from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, August 26th, for a block evangelist event. Those two will go, that will go with the police department. Next item on our agenda?
Orderance.
We have ordinance 16-23, ordinance for possible adoption, and ordinance to amend the salary ordinances creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans. Need a motion to open for public comment.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion made, and second, to open for public comment, and clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Okay, we're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this particular ordinance, I'm gonna ask you to please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. And obviously, we ask, we require, this is that, your comments or questions pertain to this ordinance and this ordinance only. Any takers? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Shelton, 47th Floyd Street. Most of the salary changes in this particular ordinance just affect hourly personnel. But there are two regular positions here, salary positions, that are also being affected. A particular concern to me is the Chief Financial Officer salary change. The minimum is listed at $126,250, maximum $166,400. But I don't see any step associated with this. Is the Chief Financial Officer position devoid of step? The vital registrar, as you see from this document, has six steps associated with it. But the Chief Financial Officer apparently doesn't have any steps.
I'm gonna take a stab at that, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, you let me know. So what we did do in this ordinance particularly, you've mentioned the registrar of vital statistics. So with that, the question is, why are we doing that? We've always had a registrar. As this, as this council, this administration has historically done, anytime a position is vacated, very often, we take the opportunity to reduce the starting salary for that. So while I know you didn't mention that, this is actually a reduction in the starting salary for that particular position. That's why that one's on here as a change, and you are correct with steps. The other ones are hourly, sometimes they reflect change in minimum wage. And the next one, Chief Financial Officer, you are correct. I don't see steps. That tells me that potentially the manager would set the salary--
Because the Chief Financial Officer is an hourly part-time position, there are no steps involved.
It's an hourly part-time, it's not a full-time position.
No.
Correct. What is the current minimum and what is the current maximum? I read the new numbers, but do you happen to know of hand what the current minimum and maximum are? We'd like to know what the overall change is here.
Well, what position?
Well, the Chief Financial Officer, the minimum is listed at 126,250.
The maximum?
Maximum is 166,400.
Correct, so what's the question?
What are the current, these are the new numbers. What are the current numbers?
I believe the old number was one-- The old number was, it's on the tip of my brain, let's see. It was a full-time finance officer, and I believe the range was like 125 to 150. But that was a full-time position.
Can I ask you to email me at your convenience this week with those numbers?
Absolutely.
Okay, without having to file an Oprah request? All right, thank you. This new salary, is this going to affect the current interim financial officer, Mr. Di Maria? Or is this designed to help the successor, Mr. Fabiano?
No.
Well, there is a--
Your comment was addressed to the manager.
We do have another chief finance, or a person being trained--
Mr. Sheldon, we have one and only one Chief Financial Officer. This ordinance is directed and related to the one and only Chief Financial Officer.
All right, so this does--
All right, so this bears directly on Mr. Di Maria, not Mr. Fabiano?
This only reflects the Chief Financial Officer.
All right, we have only one person right now who is serving as Chief Financial Officer?
The town of Bellevue has one Chief Financial Officer.
All right, and what is Mr. Fabiano's role then?
I don't think anything to do with this ordinance.
Well, he has been advertised as the--
Doesn't have anything to do with this particular ordinance. You could ask the question in a few minutes during public comment.
All right, well, we'll explore this issue some more later tonight, thank you.
Anybody else for this ordinance and this ordinance only? Here or none, seeing none. I'll see any motion to close, move for final adoption?
Sooner.
Second.
Motion to close public and move for final adoption.
Second.
Sounds like we have a motion made, and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli? Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 16-23 is adopted.
Okay, moving on, the next topic for us is going to be--
Ordinance 19-23, ordinance for introduction.
An ordinance authorizing a township of Bellevue to accept an easement for location of and access to a gateway sign concerning the real property located at 81 Stevens Street, a portion of the former block 9403, Lot 1, to be known as Block 9403, Lot 1.01. Need a motion for introduction?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, but you gotta be quick up here, you gotta be quick. We have a motion made, and second, for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-23 is introduced. Ordinance 20-23, ordinance for introduction.
An ordinance of the mayor and council, the township of Bellevue, in the County of Essex and the State of New Jersey, amending the revised general ordinance code of the township of Bellevue, Chapter 23, Section 18, to include a new section, 18.30, entitled Satellite Dish. I need a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce.
There we go, now we're good. Motion made, and second. Clerks, clerks, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-23 introduced.
Perfect. Okay, the next item on our agenda is going to be--
Public comments.
So if you have a comment, I'm gonna ask you to please raise your hand once you're called upon. You're to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And when you do, you have five minutes to hopefully speak on what is township business. So do we have anybody for public comment? We do need a motion open. Do I have a motion?
Motion to open public?
Second.
We have a motion made, and second, to open public comment, and clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumulo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
I got so excited for public comment, and I just jumped ahead. Now we're open, same speech, I'm gonna ask you to please raise your hand once you're called upon. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to hopefully speak on what is township-related business. Anybody? Mr. Frantantoni?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and all you lovely students. Vincent Frantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect. At the last meeting, I brought to the council's attention that a handicapped resident had moved, and I requested that the handicap sign be removed. Mr. Welter, DPW, director, asked me the address, and very thankful, the next day, the sign was removed. So I want to thank him for that. In regards to illegal apartments, that's been a pet thing to me for years. I've been telling you, now you advertise the pickleball thing, you advertise everything on Facebook and your site and all that. We need more publicity on this. Now, a couple of years ago, I made the flyer, and I recommended that you put it in the tax bills. It doesn't cost anything extra, just a piece of paper. You mail the tax bills. You have on the agenda tonight, you're gonna mail out the estimated tax bills. Put this flyer in there, warning the people. Put this flyer in there, warning the people, because you know they're gonna get, and they're gonna read their tax bills. Put this warning in there, if they're caught with a legal department, what the penalty will be. And then you have to do follow-ups when you're caught. A couple of years ago, you pressed me to, so I made a complaint on somebody. Nobody went there until the police and fire department had to go to that house for an incident, and then they found out the legal apartments. They were brought to court, the tenants moved out. A month later, new tenants moved in. So anybody caught and goes to court, I recommend you pass an ordinance, six months later, you go back and re-inspect that house. In regards to Resolution G, sick and vacation time. Again, I and others have been telling this council, previous council, misusing sick and vacation times, but you all just took care of your friends and went by deaf ears until some of us made complaints to the state, and now you were caught. It's unfortunate, you didn't do the right thing.
I believe eighty municipalities were in that survey, Mr. Frantantoni.
Well, you're not proud of that, are you?
No, but you certainly, we're an isolated town.
All right, but you were warned by citizens. You were warned by citizens that you were doing it wrong. And not only were you doing it wrong, on one incident, you caused the taxpayers $1.9 million by passing a bond ordinance to pay off vacation sick times, and another item called, as you people put on the paper, incentives, which the right word was a bribe, to get people to retire, so you can make your budget look less and all that. So let's hopefully, you learned your lesson, and we don't misuse sick and vacation time. In regards to the dirt bikes, there was another incident a couple of years ago, in front of my laundromat, up the street, talking to a customer, eight or nine dirt bikes at the light here, Rucker Street, that turned green, they all took off with their wheelies and all, and the car was coming out of Van Houten by People's Bank. They went to go around, and the one guy was going so fast, he flew up on Eastern College lawn, and he was killed. So this video that the chief has, I don't know if there was any video of that incident, if we could also put that on Facebook, to show the people what happens with these things, these dirt bikes, and the danger they pose to us. All right, that's it for tonight, I'd just like to congratulate these students for attending this meeting, and I wanna compliment you, you all know how to use a microphone. Put your mouth about two inches away from it, because we heard every one of you speaking, which we don't always hear public officials. Thank you, and congratulations on... If any of you decide to go into public service, I commend you, thank you.
Anybody else for public commenting?
Dros.
Mr. Dros.
Good evening, Mayor of 2095 Bell Street. It's so nice to see all the students here getting their lessons in government, and probably some of you may be sitting up here some, one of these days, we hope. In regards to, I just wanna bring this up, just, we've talked about this in the past, about the agenda not being available online. So my question is, I was thinking...
The agenda is available online.
No, no, I'm talking about the entirety with the bill list and everything, which is not available, am I correct?
Right.
Okay, now, Mr. Martino, I remember saying, I think it was a case law, and he said that the council does not have to provide it, if I remember correctly. He said they do, the council does not have to put it online, or something in that sense you said, right? Right, okay, so my question is, I don't know why we cannot have that information prior to the meeting, because the entire council appoints the clerk, the attorney, and the manager. Well, takes this four of you, so I'm really pointing the finger at you, because all it takes is four of you to talk to your appointments, say, you know, why don't we make this stuff available to the public? It shouldn't be left in the hands of your employees, that's what they are, your employees. So I would hope the four of you can make a change here, and have this up online, so we can view this information prior to a meeting. On June 3rd, a community bike ride. I got stuck in traffic because I couldn't cross. First thing my wife said to me when we couldn't cross the street was, I can't believe this, they're letting these kids ride on the street without a helmet? In short, that's on the police video, which I already looked, and it's true. My question is, I don't know if you have a driver's license, the vehicle you were driving is considered a motorcycle? I don't know if it was registered, I don't know if you have license plates on it. There's two state statutes, and then you were driving without a helmet? In fact, I took a picture of, and you know I put it on Facebook. There's two state statutes, don't know that. I have a picture of you, you look right at me, I'll show you the picture if you want. Helmet law, no person shall operate or ride a motorcycle unless he wears the proper helmet, side reflectors, and approved by the DOT. That's number 39376.1. Then you have another state statute here, this right here, titled 394-10-1. Anyone under 17 years of age must wear a helmet. What kind of example was that setting that day for the trooper? And I don't know, and the other thing is, on Union Avenue coming down this street, Doralman Street making a right on Union Avenue, there's double solid lines there by school number three, and you're driving southbound in a northbound lane. Why is this acceptable to you? I don't even know if you have a license to drive. I have one for 50 years, I know the rules very well on motorcycles. You care to comment about this behavior?
Do you have another minute, Mr. Dros?
I don't know, I got minute 1:37, I time myself. If I ask you a question, you wanna give me an answer? Because I still could talk answer you, rebuttal you. No. But it's okay for you to drive around without a helmet?
I didn't say that.
You didn't do it?
I didn't say that either, no.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I'm gonna show you the picture right now.
I know where I was, I know what I was doing, what I was doing.
And I know I was watching you too.
So let me just explain everybody, let me just explain. Mayor, you want an answer or no?
Yeah, go ahead, you can talk, I got a minute after you go.
So for everybody that's listening, I'm so glad that you're able to be here today, and understand exactly what we go through every single week, where you can come up here and easily say what a great job the police department did, what a great sense of community the township does by creating events like this, but there are people in this township that come to almost every single council meeting, and don't say anything positive, only say negative things, and they wanna sit there and cast some aspersions on...
Maybe if you were a little more transparent, no, I know, you interrupt me all the time, but if you were a little more transparent, I wouldn't be here.
So, to answer the question, we are on a closed road. Anybody ever go to a block party here, a street fair? Anybody ever have the police department close the street for you? Well, guess what, on every single day of your life, you can't set up a table and a chair and barbecue on your street, can you? That's wrong, right? But when the road is closed, you can do that. So thankfully, our police department closes roads and does this really nice event, and rather than actually stand here and compliment the police department, you actually have people that are complaining that children maybe didn't have a helmet on at that time. Announcements were made at the beginning of the event, that children should wear a helmet, and children, but you know what, at the end of the day, if you're with your parents and you're okay...
We handed out helmets.
We even handed out helmets. If you're on a closed road, if you're on a closed road, and your parents are okay, we don't wanna run the lives of children here. We're okay with letting parents make decisions for them, and if they're okay with it, they're okay with it. But I'm so very glad that you're all here to see some of the different comments that were made at this council, and there's more coming, I'm sure. But that's exactly what we go through on a daily basis, rather than commend the police department, or commend this mayor and council for the good things we're doing in the community, we pick on one little thing and try and cast aspersions on.
You're always avoiding it, sir. You always avoid everything.
You avoid everything.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, students. Anthony Cozzia, 94 North Street. I just wanna commend Department of Public Works for a great job, they did not cut a tree down in front of my house. I came to the last meeting, I spoke to the director, and told him that I carpeted a ranch in my beautiful cherry blossom tree. And the next day, his team was there, took care of the problem, and I just wanna say thank you very much. I know, I've worked for the department for almost 30 years, and there's been nothing but bash, the whole department, but today I see a turnaround in the department, and thank you for doing a professional job, great job, and your team is very good. Thank you. And one other quick thing, I know we give out rabies shots in town, and we're not giving them out this year, in the next coming month or so, I call the Department of Health. But I spoke with St. Hubert's Animal Welfare Department down in Middletown, now, they come to dog parks, and they give out rabies shots, but also they neuter and spay for free. Okay, so they just were in East Orange, the 300. I spoke with the director there, and they said if the manager or the mayor could send an email out to them, that very possible they'd come to Belleville and do the same.
Okay.
It's St. Hubert's.
See our directors in the back nodding their head, so we'll take other advice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Sure.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. As I'm sure everyone is aware, June is Pride Month, and I noticed over the last few years, our town hall made an effort every June to support Pride Month. All of our surrounding communities, not least Bloomfield-Monclair, have long ago passed proclamations in support of Pride Month. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't done anything. Is there any, any planned flag raising, any flags to be displayed in front of this building in support of Pride Month? You can answer that later on, I'd like to know. The Resolution Number G, which is the corrective action plan for the unused time in vacation time, I know there is a document for this, the corrective action plan, can that be either made public, or can it be sent to me? I'd like to have a copy of it, so that I don't have to submit another Oprah request? We talked earlier tonight about all the overwhelming Oprah requests, this information is usually not provided to us unless we make specific requests of it, which leads to the amount of Oprahs. So could I get a copy of the corrective action plan? One of the resolutions deals with the redevelopment plan for the new Quick Check, for those, the students that are here, super members of the audience, there's a new Quick Check that's going to be built now on the former School One property, which is along Rucker Street between Courtland and Stevens. That property has ADOR designation. I looked through the verbiage of the redevelopment plan, I can't find any mention if this project is going to get a pilot or a long-term tax exemption. I know Mr. Donatelli's here tonight, I'm sure he would have that information, but I'd like to know, for my edification and the rest of the community, is the Quick Check going to get a tax abatement beyond the normal five-year rehabilitation one that they're automatically entitled to? Resolution L, you're instructing the tax department to generate the new tax bills, which we will be receiving later in July, due in August. According, if you look through the details of this, it says that you're about to raise Now, the Board of Education adopted their budget back in April, and I'm sure Mr. Iacono and the rest of the people in this building, Board of Labor and Finance has got the Board of Ed's A4F form, which is the official announcement from Dr. Tonko, Mr. Palladino of the BOE budget, they're raising, they've asked you to raise 47, a little over 47 million. So when you do the quick calculation, you're asking the tax department to raise almost 100, well, over 121 million. The Board of Ed is asking for 47.1 million, the difference there is over 74 million. But according to the adopt, or the budget you introduced, and I know the public hearing is two weeks from tonight, but if you do the quick difference, that's over 74 million dollars, but yet in the proposed budget, it says you're only raising 57 million. So I'm just giving you some advance notice, when we have the public hearing two weeks from tonight, I would appreciate a detailed explanation why there seems to be a $17 million discrepancy in the numbers. And then lastly, all term...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just wanna mention that in my calculation, you're forgetting, you're forgetting the county taxes.
It's the total tax levy, we'll have this discussion... Seventeen million dollars in county taxes? All right, we'll go through this.
Excellent answers. Thank you.
The last thing I wanted to talk about tonight is what was mentioned earlier about the excessive amount of Oprahs. For all the students that are here, and this was addressed a little earlier by Mr. Dros, this is what our town hall gives us prior to council meetings. This is what Bloomfield gives to their residents. It's every detail, including all the tax payments, all the bills, all the full text of ordinance's resolutions. Now, I've done, I've viewed this dance multiple times with the township attorney, Mr. Martino, where he's argued, and he's actually worked for Bloomfield previously...
I still do.
You still do, good, I'm glad you still do. He's argued with me that in the PDF that Bloomfield provides to all their residents online, that the full text of things like resolutions don't appear. He's actually...
I believe he's mentioned ordinances for...
No, what I have said, and it's still true, okay, it's still true, you said that every document, and the contents of every document that they are considering are there. That is not true.
All right, well, Mr...
So you guys can debate this at any time, but you are out of time.
I'm arguing you, Mr. Sheldon. Please don't approach me. Please don't approach, don't approach me.
So you are out of time, Mr. Sheldon?
You scare me, remember? Yeah, well, you can't tell me the truth, because I scare you, you're the one that scares this community.
Mr. Sheldon, Mr. Sheldon, you are out of order, you're out of time. Anybody else for public commenting? Mrs. Fleischer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Carmella Fleischer from the 833 Main Street. I was hoping, fool child that I am, that we could show the students how a town should conduct business.
We don't control the public commenting, Mrs. Fleischer.
I understand that, I completely understand that. I was hoping that everyone could show respect and humility tonight, which, again, it would be nice, because, again, you're looking at the future leaders of this town, and of this state, and of the community. We should all be working together, you know, putting the little pettiness, little nonsense aside, and showing the future, and showing the next generation how it should be done. That is a personal comment. I wanted to also address the fencing on Main Street. I understand that is the state doing it, which is lovely, God bless them, why do they put up new fencing while cleaning the grounds? Boggles the mind. Are they keeping the town informed and up to date with what they're doing?
To the best of my knowledge, no, unless Mr. Iacono has more information than I have. No.
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Okay, could we, you know, maybe address that, because, again, they're putting up all this lovely fencing...
I've gotten emails, I agree with you.
But they're not cleaning.
I agree with you.
So, you know, again, that would be another suggestion, and just on a very, you know, not rude way, but as I stated in the past, with the governing body and things like that, a comment was made that more than three people can't sit at the table down here. I see a couple more than three people tonight. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
In the spirit of... So, yeah, but I, there was no real common questions on that, but I will comment, and I agree with you that it would be nice if that was the case today, but I also agree, as somebody who's sat up here for five years, and two meetings a month, 24, two meetings, 26 meetings a year for five years, over 100 meetings, I would love for the tone to be different. However, I'm also happy that there's a roomful of people here today, parents and students that actually get a chance to see how we're treated, and how we're talked to, and how we're accused of things. I actually don't mind that this one time, this one day today, I don't. Anybody else? Anybody else? Nope? I'll entertain a motion to close, public commenting?
Make the motion.
Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozzarelli.
Yes.
De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori. Rovell.
Yes.
Strumolo Burke.
Yes.
And Mayor Malham.
Yes. So before we do that, I, it's gonna be very difficult for me to do this without eliminating some people, but we do have, we do have a microphone there, right? Okay, so I'm just gonna take two minutes, we do this, this is the first time I've ever done this, so, we haven't done this before, but I'm gonna start to my very left, we have a deputy mayor, Graziano, we have a second deputy mayor. If we can just, I just wanna announce the young people that are up here with us, if you give your official title and your last name, that would be great.
I'm Deputy Mayor Barrero.
I am Deputy Mayor Juliette Algado.
I'm Councilwoman Donatoli.
I am Mayor Jagru.
I am Councilwoman Reyes.
I am Councilwoman Sowery.
Second ward councilwoman of the class.
Nice. We have a township attorney here.
I am Township's Attorney McCarthy.
Very nice. We have a town manager here. And we have a clerk.
Town Manager Boylan.
Township Clerk Diaz Galoso.
And I do know that many of our directors, first of all, I just wanna thank the directors for all being here today, and I know that we all have, we have students shadowing us, so we're just gonna let them have the opportunity to say hello since they weren't up here with us.
I'm Chief of Financial Officer, Ashley Garcia.
Yeah, no, we're gonna do all the professionals.
Court Administrator, Ahmed.
Chief Deputy Taiba.
Technical Assistant Dong.
So chief?
I'm Chief of Police Kaye.
Nice. That's a good one, that's a good one.
Hello, I'm Tax Collector Borja.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Health Director Quezala Flores.
Nice.
Municipal Judge Domingo.
Did we have everyone, that was important.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got the DPW director.
Steve was on a game show. Now we found a better career for you, Steve.
Oh, friend. Superintendent of Public Works, Inspector Gabriel.
Nice. I have a street that needs, that's got a hole in it. Did we miss anybody? Please, directors, did we miss somebody that you were with?
Fire Chief Aubrey. Nice.
I do notice that we have no, no purchasing agent. You're irreplaceable, is that why Mr. Bell? Mr. Bellano's irreplaceable. Once again, thank you all students in here, but also, also directors. First of all, it's great to have so many directors in the room. We love having you guys at council meetings, by the way. But it's also been, I know it's been a challenge today, not doing your normal tasks and doing some of this stuff today, so thank you all for your cooperation, directors, and obviously all the students, glad to give you guys a chance. We're not done with our meeting, though, so we're gonna now move quickly. The next topic on our agenda is going to be-
Consent agenda.
We need a motion. I have nothing.
Make motions.
We have a motion.
Motion to move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have multiple motions. Let's get a second. We have a motion, we have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori? Rovell?
Yes.
Stromalo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
So what we just did for, I know there's a lot of new members in the public, we have about A through L, however many resolutions that is, we just passed them all in one big bulk. And the reason why, I was telling our, our young mayor here, that she can't make a motion or second, is because we kind of chaired the meeting, and the council then makes their motions and seconds at our inquiry, I guess. That's why, so. Now that's it, we just passed all the resolutions on the consent agenda, have all been approved. So the next item on our agenda is going to be-
New business.
So the only thing we have for new business is some resolutions that we're gonna-
Proclamations.
Proclamations. So we're not going to read every single one, but how about we do this? After we adjourn the meeting, we'll have everybody, all the students come up, we'll move the table away, we'll take one group picture with the, are they all, with the department heads? Are they all the same?
Yes.
Yeah? So I'm just gonna read one, try and do it generically, even though they're all customized. This one is actually for our mayor, so I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read this one. Resolved by the Municipal Council of Towne Street of Bellville, whereas Samantha Jagru has been selected to represent Mayor Michael Melham from the Towne Street of Bellville on Student Government Day, and whereas Student Government Day provides students with an opportunity to work together for common purposes, select leaders from among their peers, and deal responsibly with faculty and administrators in their everyday life. And whereas such opportunities are helping to teach the basic skills of citizenship, and to develop the qualities of leadership in the young people taking part in today's event. Whereas, by enhancing the self-respect of students, and the mutual respect among groups within a school community, Student Government Day also contributes to the climate of eagerness to learn and grow in which education can flourish. Now, therefore, be resolved by the mayor and Municipal Council of Towne Street of Bellville, wish to share in the celebration of Student Government Day, and hereby congratulate Samantha for representing Mayor, the mayor, of the Towne Street of Bellville, and wishes her good health and continued success in the future. Congratulations, great job Samantha. We are not done, as soon as we, we're gonna adjourn in just one second, and I'm gonna ask directors to please stay, students that are in the audience, please stay, and obviously any parents that want to stay can stay. We're just gonna take a moment to move the table, so we can take some pictures. So without further ado, I need a motion to-
Adjournment.
We need a motion to adjourn. We have a motion made and second. Clerk, for the last time, call the roll.
Councilmember Cozarelli?
Yes.
De Peña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori? Rovell?
Yes.
Stromalo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.